I thought it was late.
Is your microphone on?
I think so, I turned it on.
Yeah, go get them.
I call this meeting to order on June tenth, or Tuesday, June tenth, two thousand and twenty five. We will stand for the pledge of allegiance and the prayer, the prayer is going to be given by-
Mayor Pro Tem, we have to do the roll call.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor Susan Payne is absent. Mayor Pro Tem Sharon McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Crystal Guthrie.
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett.
Here.
Commissioner Warren Robinson.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Ridden.
Here.
Commissioner Mark Tapley.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem, we have a call.
Okay, now we will have the prayer and the pledge.
Would you join me in a moment of prayer? Eternal heavenly Father, look down on us and have mercy. We don't always say or do the right thing. Lord, cleanse our hearts so that we may choose what's best for all around us. Lord, you have people who want this city to be better. You have employees and you have officers who are trying to make El Magordo better each day. Give us the strength, the wisdom, the discernment, and the courage to do the right thing. Bless us to be as good as we can be, so the people who will follow us, the people who will have our legacy, will have the benefit of that wisdom. Have mercy upon us. We're going to stumble, Lord, we're going to make some mistakes. But bless us to be decent in our decisions. Bless us to be wise in our contemplations. And may we help all that we can to be better today than we were yesterday. If you do that, Lord, we'll give you the honor, the glory, and the praise. And we'll do it in your son's holy name. Amen.
Please follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, next, we're going to have the approval of our agenda.
So moved. I'll second.
It's approved by?
It's a motion was by-
Motion was given by?
Commissioner Burnett.
Commissioner Burnett, and then a second by Ridden. Okay. And the vote is six, zero, and it passes. Next on the agenda, we have a public comment. We have four people who are going to speak tonight. Each person that is called, you'll have three minutes. After three minutes, if, you know, we'll let you complete your sentence, but you'll be cut off. So the first person is going to be?
Ask them if they want to talk on the item or if they want to talk beforehand.
It looks like it's all on the golf.
If they want to do it beforehand or on the item.
Do we want to do it beforehand or do we want to do it now?
On the item.
On item number seven, because all the speakers are on the golf course. Whatever you prefer, we can do it now or we can do it on the seven. So do you want to do it now?
We can just do it before the, do it on the item.
All right, and the city manager's report is next.
Good morning, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner. Just a quick update on our projects, because we got a lot, a lot of stuff going on and we haven't given citizens an update on Facebook, so we'll probably be hitting Facebook soon. When we first started, probably a year-ish ago, we had eleven projects. Of those, four of them have been completed, two are nearing complete, three of them will be done by the end of this year. And so we, with those falling off, we have about ten more coming back that we're going to put out to bid. Within the next couple of months, we'll be putting out one a week-ish probably. Those projects include the La Luz Reservoir, Fire Station Two, which is off of Walker, the water line, the water line between lower heights tank and upper heights tank. We'll be doing the three tanks, three tanks rehabs, which are the Lower Alamo, Alcatillo, and Calhan. The WSRP Two, which was our two thousand and twenty-two SMP. Then we have the sewer and storm drain at Tenth and Washington, that will be extended to where railroad tracks, White Sands Boulevard, I'm sorry, Tenth and White Sands Boulevard. The duck pond rehab, the intersection of Highway fifty-four and seventy, we're doing the two water line replacements on each side. The well transmission, we're doing five miles of that. The west side tank, which is the big tank over there, we'll be doing a paint job on that, it doesn't need to be rehabbed. And then we're into design, we're doing a sewer replacement. It's kind of that little square White Sands to Florida and Sixteenth to Indian Wells, that kind of includes the blind school. And so we're putting that out to design. So we've got ten projects coming up to, that we're going to put out for bid, and then one going into design. So we're keeping it going, and that's all I got.
What about the, the tank that was completed and is there going to be a ribbon cutting on tomorrow?
Tomorrow, there's a ribbon cutting at two thirty, or two, two o'clock. Yes.
And where is that located at?
Thunder Road. I put the address on the calendar invite that I sent to the commissioners, so if you click on that, that's where the address is, to get you the exact location.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Stephanie, could you give us an update on the bridge?
This bridge? So it's still scheduled to be completed by July nineteenth. They've been kind of going out there and working on it. It's kind of intersecting with the Oregon WSRP. So kind of, there's two projects and it kind of looked right, they're right at the same spot, but we should be completed and ready to open it about July nineteenth.
Okay, and Justin said that it won't be paved quite yet. Where did Justin go? Right. Is that part that will be paved as well, or it will be? Yeah.
So at the moment, since they got the tie-in for the intersection of Tenth and Oregon, we're going to fill that in, leave it as base course, kind of like how you seen before, which is base course thing. Once Ten Street Bridge gets completed on the patch, we're going to pave from there all the way down past it, where the intersection is, as one passing. So it'll be all new asphalt from Washington to Oregon. So that way, next year when we tie in to the new bridge, because of course it's in design right now, we won't have to worry about new asphalt from Oregon to wherever that tie-in is. So we're just going to get it all paved, new asphalt to where now we don't have to worry about additional money next year or anything like that, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anybody else? If not, we're going to go on to the remarks and inquiries by the city commissioners.
Got one quick one, and this one might be a little controversial. On Facebook the other day, I noticed a picture somebody had posted of our rec center signing their children up for swim lessons. And we have non-binary on there for the sex of the children. Is there anything we can do to do away with that? That's nonsense. And I didn't know if there's something that you guys can look at.
We can look at it. I, I didn't know we had that on there, but I can, we can look at it.
I just saw it on Facebook and I'm, I'm like, if they don't know what gender their children are, they don't need to be parents, so.
Okay, yeah, definitely.
It says male, female, and non-binary on the-
Yeah, we'll look at it, because I don't, I don't remember doing that with my-
Like I said, that one might be a little controversial, but we need to kind of get away from that nonsense.
Okay, we'll look into it, definitely.
Thank you.
I do have one question, and I've already kind of preemptively talked to Stephanie and Justin about it. So Justin, if you want to come back. I have had a lot of concern, not complaint, but concern about the progression of Oregon and what's happening. And mainly because it's summertime and people love to swim. And we have elderly that need access to it for their classes, and then we have a lot of kids running across the street. So with all that construction encompassing Oregon, they were looking for a timeline of the project. They want to be assured they have access to parking lots and crosswalks, et cetera. So I just wanted you to let everybody know what your plan was on that project and the timeline, and so that they know what to look for.
Yeah, so when it comes down to timelines and phases, so Oregon is a phase one out of three. The project that you see on construction right now. Contractors, obviously, they come up with their own phasing, so I call them subphases. So if you hear me say that, that's the reason why. So subphase one was from Indian Wells to Sixteenth Street. Subphase two was from Sixteenth to Fourteenth. Subphase three is from Fourteenth to Twelfth. Four was Twelfth to Tenth, and then final was the intersection. We, of course, jumped over to the final subphase to eliminate trying to close down the Tenth Street for a longer period of time, because it's already been closed down for quite a bit from the bridge. So that being said, Fourteenth Street is a detour, obviously, for the CBC Bridge. We didn't want to close that off, even though they're supposed to be paving sometime this month from Indian Wells to Eighteenth. We still wanted to give that access to Washington in a closer route than making people drive that far out. So we jumped Fourteenth into subphase three and subphase four. So we're going to do three and four at the same time, because how quick GH Utilities is going on the utility part of it. They are backfilling as they go, getting our proper testings, density checks, all that. So when it comes to timeframe, it's really hard when it comes to timeframe, just because how they have it is, you have your utilities, you have your dirt crew, which is the main contractors, and then you have your concrete crew, right? So there's the main contractor, and then you have your two subs. So it kind of just depends, as long as they finish their project within their actual timeframe, which is the completion date was originally in August. But because I did do that change order for the auditorium pool for the water line, we, of course, have to add the thirty days. So we're looking about sometime in September as a substantial completion date, based off a contract.
Okay, and just for clarification, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Just for clarification, at any given point in time during this project, there will be public access to the rec center in a safe manner and parking available.
Even in the bid document, in the bid schedule, in any project that I have, it's very important that we have a MUTCD plan involved, which is, you know, pedestrian or traffic control. So when it comes to houses or public places, you always got to have some kind of access. So I've been talking and trying to figure out how they're going to get that, and they had a solution on it. So it would just be pretty much whatever they have addressed, it'll be signs upward, barrels, or however they do it, just to give people access and proper ways of where to go. So that way, no one's going into trenches or trying to cross without, you know.
Is there a way, Stephanie, for us to maybe preemptively, once this starts to progress, do some kind of photo map that we can put out to the public so that they, they have, they know exactly where to go and where to park?
That was going to be my next thing after Justin was done. We will make sure to let the rec center know, so that they, they're able to give it to their constituents, we'll blast it out on Facebook. We'll make sure, and, you know, do whatever we can to make sure and get that information out to everybody.
Kind of like how, is it Pizza Mill?
Pizza Mill.
Yeah, kind of like how Pizza Mill, they show their arrows and worked with the contractors. We'll do the same thing as the city of making sure that everybody knows. The north side, I'm trying to keep that to where it's just employees on the north side of the pool, just because it's crossing road, you know. And they'll also open up a lot of the parking spaces on the west side of the rec center, because Twelfth Street, yeah, Twelfth Street, right, yeah. They'll still be open to the parking, so you'll still be able to get in from Twelfth and Cuba direction, so.
Perfect, I appreciate it.
And Oregon is closed, right, from Tenth to Indian Wells?
Except for Fourteenth Street, yes.
Okay, because Pizza Mill's been having issues with cars driving in the opposite way.
Yes, and we did address that, we actually, Stephanie actually had Public Works go out there making sure that they have an extra sign out there for the alleys to make sure that people are not trying to go down the alleys, we're trying to go down Pizza Mill. That intersection should be open sometime at the end of this week. Fortunately, we had to open up the hole a little bit again today, just because there was a leak on the old service line from the cap. So they fixed it, it's backfilled, and they're just cleaning it up, making sure that everything's safe enough for people to drive on. So we should see that intersection back open next week sometime.
When, when we get down there, actually doing the water line replacement a little further down, are we going to? With the local businesses, I had a guy call me, I don't know, a week or so ago about access, and he owns several of the properties in there.
Are you talking about across from the Girl Scout building?
Uh, yeah, right over in that area.
He's the one that I, I worked with.
On the sign?
Yeah, if we just get signs, just so that they, people know how to access their businesses.
Got Public Works and they did the signs already. And then Belinda, the director right here, she actually got the rec center to move all of their bus, their vans, to move it on to the north side, so that way when he, that, anybody on that area does have a truck coming in for any reason, we're giving them access to drive around the Girl Scout building to make sure that they're not being stuck and all that, yeah. So we've been working really close with anybody that's involved, make sure everybody has access.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Lot of work going on, lot of construction, lot of disruption, lot of things. Would you let your staff know that we appreciate their hard work? There's a lot of changes going on, and people get frustrated, but let them know we appreciate their hard work and-
Okay. Yeah, we appreciate that.
That's all.
Thanks, Justin.
Stephanie, I know the water rate study came out.
Yes.
Do you know when we're going to get that reported?
I was going to, oops, I was going to put it on this meeting, but since the mayor wasn't here, I wanted all of y'all to have the meeting, so we'll put it on the June twenty-seventh meeting.
Will we get it beforehand to?
Yeah, I can go to you. Yeah, I'll send it out, yeah.
Any more announcements, because I'm going to finish up with. This year, again, we're going to have the El Magordo District Five City Cleanup. It's going to be Saturday, July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. It's from seven o'clock in the morning until twelve, where you can just bring your junk and, and drop it off into trash barrels. We also have shredding, if you need paper, important papers, or confidential papers shredded. That will be done at Dudley School, and that is on Sixth and Maryland. The other locations that we have will be pretty much the same as last year. We have two sites on scenic, we will have one out on Walker Road, one will be at the Senior Center. We will also have another one at Dudley School, and then another one on Panorama. But we'll have all those sites and located, and then in a paper, so that you can have it. I do have flyers, so if anybody's interested tonight, you can take it. We are going to get t-shirts, we do have sponsors this year, and we are grateful for that. And I, I just can't thank the city of El Magordo enough for all of the help that they've given us from the utilities, getting the trucks out, just helping us with everything, you know, from packets, you know, to give to people. So I'm, I'm really grateful for this, and I hope that we have a really good turnout. Last year, we had more than fifty-five people, and we're hoping to break that number again this year. So I'd like to thank all of the commissioners who are going to be participating. Thank you for your participation also. Next on the agenda is going to be our consent agenda. If there's anything that needs to be pulled, or are we going to make a motion to approve it?
I'll just make a motion to approve the consent agenda, it's items one, two, three, four, five, and six.
Okay, and?
I second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Ridden, and we also have a second by?
Crystal Guthrie.
Commissioner Guthrie, thank you, and the vote is up.
Sorry.
Motion passes six, zero.
Motion passes, I'm looking down here at the next item here. It passes six, zero. Our next item is item number seven, and it's consider and act upon the future operational direction of the city of El Magordo's municipal Desert Lakes Golf Course. Belinda Bass is going to be the presenter. And do we want to have the, the public comments? All right, first on the list is Stephen Burt. Bunt? Okay. And you have three minutes. You can complete your sentence, but after three minutes, we'll just cut you off.
My name is Stephen Bunt. I first want to thank the city, the fact that the golf course is, is getting talked about is important, so thank you for that. I came, when I heard about the decision of this, I came in with a very open mind of what would be the best route to go. In, in past meetings, the city has said that the current state of the golf course, because of, you know, bad irrigation system, bad water, low budget, low staff, past superintendent problems, et cetera. I don't know if I buy a hundred percent of that, but for the sake of my comment, I'll give a full concession that that's all it needed. Was if we had more, more money and more time, the course would be in great shape. Play golf out there and see several problems that I think could be fixed without more money and time, just small things. For example, the tee, tee markers are often placed in the worst place possible within the tee boxes. Sandy lies, uneven lies, that kind of thing that can be fixed without more money and more time. Flagsticks used to be color-dependent on where they are on the green, let people know where the flag is within the green. Knowing where your target is makes golf a lot more fun. That could be fixed with, with no money and no time. More recently, the, the windmills with the, the concrete, well, I digress, I could go on, for the sake of time, we'll move on. And I, I don't mean to make, in the past, in some of the past meetings, some of these accusations have become very personal and very heated, and I don't intend to be that way at all. I don't know whose fault it is, I don't know if it's a laborer, a supervisor, superintendent, Parks and Rec. I, I don't know whose it is, but it, it needs to be addressed. That somewhere, there's a break in the system, and there's, there's seems to be a lack of checks and balances on what happens at the golf course. That'd just be uneasy to turn control over the entire golf course to that system. It's not any one person's fault in particular. Again, these are just some, I think, facts and problems that need to be addressed. And I'd be more open to the idea the city taking over if there was a track record going back four and five, six, seven years. If there's a track record showing that some of these small problems were getting fixed that don't need more budget and don't need more staff. Maybe by the next time the contract comes due, I might feel differently. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jason Ballin. Okay, yes. Grant?
Dalson.
Dobbs?
Grant Dalson, the current contractor, Gino Golf Desert Lakes Golf Course. Good evening, Mayor, Pro Tem, Commissioners, city staff, everyone here for this. We all care about the golf course, and we all want to see it go in the right direction. I do want to thank Stephanie, Belinda, and Mike for their hard work, they've put a lot of work into this. It's created a little bit of tension between us. We both, we all want the best thing, but I just have a different belief in the direction it needs to go. I believe going to an RFP management, for a management company is the best way forward for Desert Lakes and the community. It does come with risks, but it's still the better option, in my opinion. The reasons are as follows, the private sector can employ roughly for twenty percent less than the public sector. Plus, there are no employee legacy costs going forward, none of those costs of para and insurance and retired insurance going forward. The private sector is more nimble in the way they can deal with employees. They can hire, manage, and replace poor performers much faster than the city can. And obviously, the continuity of the existing services going forward is very important. Under the city model, that budget would also be giving up the food and beverage, which is your single largest- Under the city model, that budget would also be giving up the food and beverage, which is your single largest revenue out there. Um, asking for 10% from a vendor would be very difficult for that vendor to make a good profit. But under the management model, that 10% and any profit goes to the bottom line of the golf course. The management agreement, uh, management concept also gives the city a layer of, of liability insulation that GNL Golf currently gives you right now. Under that contract, both, under a management contract, both the contractor and city would sit down each year and come up with a business plan and a budget. This is where the city would ask for programs to be created that can do other things at the golf course and bring other people into the golf course that don't necessarily utilize the facility now. The management company would then execute those things with their expertise, because they have expertise. Most importantly, a management, golf management company in, are in the business of golf and golf only. That's all they do. The level of expertise cannot be matched by the city. They have a level of golf-specific resources that cannot be matched by the city. Specific cost-cutting, vendor discounts, and national contracts that the city does not have. Employee sourcing when needed. Food and beverage experience, menu design for profit increase. Revenue management, dynamic pricing, promotions to boost revenues. The marketing that they do on a regular and daily basis, trying to get more revenue, increase, increase the revenue. And they can also make sure they make these without damaging the current rate structure. Bottom line, I just want what's best for the city. I truly believe that a management concept is the best way to go. GNL Golf came here 34 years ago today. We started business. Thirty-four years, it's ironic. But we're a management company too, and I think we've done a pretty good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Commission, uh, city staff, acting city manager. Grant pretty much covered all the basics of what, you know, I would have mentioned tonight. I do wanna say that, um, no matter what happens tonight with the two items on your agenda, you can always come back to the idea of the city running the golf course. The management agreement moving forward does come, come with risks, um, but it would be a better option, I think, for the city to go out and try that option, uh, as Grant stole a little bit of thunder there. June 10th, 1992 is when Desert Lakes first took over, and they chose a pretty good, uh, management company to run Desert Lakes Golf Course. I don't know that there's many contractors that's been with the city for 33-plus years, uh, that's renewed their contract five or six times. Uh, so the option of coming in-house is something that you can always come back to if something doesn't work out. I'm sure all of you have heard from people within the community. Those people in the community have, um, have shared their, their opinions with you. Of the hundreds of people I've talked to, um, as Stephen Bunt said, it, it's, it's not like anybody doesn't think that the city's plan is a good plan. There's just not a ton of faith the city's gonna be able to execute it, uh, over a long period of time. It's not, uh, a despair remark toward, uh, Bendy and her plan and Michael's dedication to the golf course. That's just basically because staffs change, you change, there's an election coming up, there's, uh, agendas that change, there's mindsets that change and budgets, of course, the overarching idea that it changed. The RFP is key. If you decide to vote to go to a management agreement, I ask that you do your due diligence, uh, as you always do with the things that you do with the city, and make sure that RFP is written correctly. There's a lot of people out there that can help with that process. Choosing that, um, management company is gonna be an important thing if you go that route, and how that RFP is written, and the fact that, uh, you have the option to choose the correct people with local input, the El Magordo Men's Golf Association, the Ladies Association, the people that have put, uh, time and effort in this community for the last 30-plus years to make sure things go well. Last thing I'll say is, the effort that Bendy and Michael have put into their proposal is, is to be commended in a sense that they really do have a pretty good vision for what Desert Lakes Golf Course could be, the asset it can be to the community. And all that I ask is, if you decide to go with a management agreement, that the effort that the city wants to put into their own effort gets put into the management agreement effort. If they have ideas for getting grants, if they have ideas for getting, uh, external funding, if they have ideas of promoting or advertising the golf course, although the city has done that over the years, it certainly would be nice if it was done over the last 33 years and not the upcoming 10 years that they are choosing to do for the, the golf course. So I really believe all that effort can be put into the management agreement too. Uh, and I thank you for your time and good luck with your choice.
Next on the agenda is Ron Griggs.
Good evening, Madam Pro Tem, and good evening, Commissioners. Now, I'm Ron Griggs. I attended, I attended both town halls, and I honestly appreciate you guys putting those on, because I think they were good for everybody. But I'm personally concerned about the city being able to manage the entire golf course operation. I'm concerned about the numbers that were presented to us, and I'm concerned about how reliable they were. I believe, though, that staff is sincere in their belief that they can manage the golf course and manage the entire facility and improve it. I believed them when they said that they wanna put it in a condition that will be able to host the state championship golf tournaments for the high schools. I think, though, that the commission should have staff's approach evaluated by an outside third party before you make a decision. Having staff as the sole evaluator creates the appearance of a directed decision. And I wanna say this to you, and I don't wanna, I don't want this to be something that comes across as negative to the individuals that are here tonight. Because this has been an ongoing issue for our golf course for years, is being able to adequately maintain it. And the adequate, adequacy is that is sometimes something that should fall directly at the feet of either city management, city manager, or the city commission. Because the budget for the golf course is often, uh, compromised, and you don't provide the revenue for them to be able to accomplish the task that you've given them. But I think if staff can adequately, if they believe, and we believe, that they can adequately manage the whole course, the whole course, wouldn't it stand to reason that they could manage the maintenance of the golf course? And I think it's hard to look at it today and believe that that's what's happening. You know, Grant and Lori have operated out there for over 30 years. It's been their life. They've done what they could there to make that place better and better for Alamo Gordo and for the citizens that play golf, and for the community as a whole. I think you really need to take into consideration what they are saying to you, because it comes from the bottom of their heart to make the golf course a better place and Alamo Gordo a better place. So thank you all tonight, and good luck on the, the decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Belinda, are you ready?
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. Hernandez. First, before I start, um, I want to talk about a few things. First, my job is to present a set of facts and to gather data and present options. And that's what this whole exercise has been. It's to give options. It's to show where our money actually is going at the golf course and how it's being spent. Another thing, I've received quite a few emails, um, both forwarded by Commission and that have come to me this week. And a lot of those are concerns about what the fairways look like right now and what their tees look like, um, as far as their condition. So through meetings between city staff and GNL Golf, our golf course superintendent has been directed to focus all of it, most of his attention as far as making big improvements on the greens. So that's, we're getting ready to tear up the fairways. It would not be fiscally responsible for us to go out and put a massive reseeding project going on just to tear that up while we put the irrigation in. So the focus has been on the greens as far as doing, getting those green again, 'cause we don't deny that they weren't as green as greens should be. So a, a lot of our other, uh, feedback has been on private carts and annual passes. And so, public feedback is how cities operate, how we know what we're doing, what we're doing right and what might be done not right. And so, again, we had some suggestions in our original presentation. Those are all completely adjustable. We don't get to choose the costing or anything. That's a commission decision. We can give ideas, we get feedback, we modify those ideas and those, and those thoughts and those decisions. Um, I also feel like I, um, kinda, I owe Senator Griggs an apology. At our last public meeting, he made a comment about, uh, if we, um, took off the largest year in our, our budget and we eliminated that from our, our five-year average, that it would look a lot different. And it would. And I had, I misspoke, and I said if we took off the highest and lowest, it would be the same. It'd actually cut it in half. However, with that being said, those highest years and those lowest years, those are not anomalous. That's fairly typical. Some years, we will have a really big, um, subsidy, because maybe we got equipment or something happened. And some years, we, we get really close to breaking even. So there is that up and down, and that's what that shows. Those aren't anomalous. Those are, those are factual facts. So, which is why we did the five-year average. So I just wanted to clarify that before we got started. Also, on the, um, as far as keeping the golf course on track, as we, if we transitioned to an in-house model, we would have a master plan, and that master plan is what helps keep the city on track. That's why cities do master plans, is to keep those things on track. So when commissions change and staff changes, those master plans are in place. We have a very active golf community, as I'm sure we all have seen, and I'm sure that they also won't let any future commission or future staff forget that that's what's in the master plan and this is the goals. And as far as what our plan is for all the things we wanna do, we're still gonna try to do those things. Driving range improvements, all of those things, those are still on our list, no matter how, what direction this goes. Getting, uh, funding might be a little bit more difficult, but those are still things that we're gonna try to do. So I just wanted to clarify those things, 'cause those have been like the big hot button topics, um, that I have received information on. So, uh, we'll get into the PowerPoint presentation, which is, I'm sure some of us have seen this more times than we care, because it's, uh, we've, we've gone over it. We have, uh, done some modifications for this one. So, um, so we've had two different town hall meetings, um, one on May 12th and one on June 4th. Um, the brief history, in 1971, the city acquired the land that is now the back nine from the Bureau of Land Management with the condition that it be used for recreational purposes for perpetuity. Didn't say golf course, just said recreation. Uh, the front nine was originally owned and operated by the Alamo Gordo Country Club, and in 1944, or 1984, I'm sorry, gave the front nine property to the city of Alamo Gordo uh, with a deed restriction or condition that it be maintained as a golf course for perpetuity or until unless the city constructed a new, um, at least nine-hole golf course. So, our options for consideration, uh, RFP, the restaurant, uh, operations on the Golf Pro, bring the management of the full golf course in-house, or another third option is the sale or reversion of the golf course. Um, the current contract, uh, term has ended, and by state procurement regulations, the city has not permitted continued services under the existing agreement. Excuse me. To ensure compliance and transparency, the city must issue a formal RFP or request for proposals to allow interested third-party operators the opportunity to submit proposals for the continued operations. So, brief history, um, as Grant said earlier, they've been here, um, 34 years today. Um, and GNL Golf operates the pro shop, which takes care of the lessons, cart rentals, tournament organization, the high school program, and they operate the 19th hole restaurant. And they have done, uh, a lot of hard work, and they have worked hard to build, uh, the game of golf here in Alamo Gordo. So here's the financial facts, the golf professional restaurant operates on the golf, uh, uh, cost-sharing plan. So we pay the golf contractor $30,000 a year, a flat fee, and then they receive 95% of the revenue from the restaurant, 100% of the pro shop sales, 100% of the cart shed rentals, 60% of all the cart rentals, 60% of the driving range fees, uh, 40% of the cart trail fees, 20% of the greens fees, and 25% of the annual pass fees. And so this is the visual of what that looks like. So the blue lines are what the contractor makes, and the yellow lines are what the city makes. So the pro shop, um, as somebody has made sure to, that, tell me that I should point out, the pro shop, we don't pay for any of the inventory. We don't receive any of that. They purchase all their inventory and they, they receive all the revenues for the pro shop. So that's on there, just because people often have questions, because they think that, um, we have received part of that revenue. So this is the financial data. So the top green line is the actual revenue generated. That does not include what the pro shop makes, because that's not a shared revenue. This is just the shared revenue. So this is the restaurant, the greens fees, annual passes, cart rentals, those things. The next line, the gold line, is what it costs the city to operate. That is the cost of us to employ our staff, seed, fertilizer, and any of those things. So as you can see, in 2020, it was, um, at 593, and in 2021, it dropped. A lot of that had to do with employment costs dropping, um, because, um, we don't have seasonals or part-time staff anymore. And any of the years where it's gone way up, that's usually where we've received equipment or things like that. So that's included in those. So the next green line, the revenue balance, is after paying those costs, and the, then the blue line after that is what we pay back to the contractor, their percentage of all the revenue and their flat fee. So the red, red line after that is what is remaining after that. The purple line is the subsidy amount. And then, uh, the bottom line is basically, it's the arrears and the cost of the subsidy. Sorry. So what we're, we've faced right now is deferred maintenance, uh, and you see a lot of the cause and effect of that. The maintenance projects, large and small, have been deferred in the effort to avoid affecting the contractor's revenue stream. And that's actually built into the contract, which nobody, I think, in this room had anything to do with writing that contract. We get a lot of flack about that. But that's how that, well, Grant was here. They wrote, but it was, I'm sure attorneys and things had a lot to do with that. So, um, so we have ponds that need to be redone, we have course improvements, large seeding projects, all sorts of things that need to be done, and, um, those are, um, hard to get done when we can't close down large portions of the course or several holes at a time to get things done. So there's a balancing act between what needs to be done and what can be done, and it creates, uh, contention conflict between city staff and the contractor regarding what is a priority and what is not. So our option is, um, to bring this all in-house. Due to the condition of the course, we'd like to bring it in-house for the next five to 10 years. Take the management, um, in-house, so the improvements can be made without, uh, conflict with the contractor and enhance, uh, and allow us to enhance features and attract new players from all segments of society. The restaurant would still be leased out. Uh, we recommend that the revenue sharing be adjusted to a minimum of 90% to the contractor and 10% to the city, something, um, that, 'cause they also, not only are they using our facility, but they are also using our liquor license. So that's, uh, things that have to be taken into consideration. So 10-year post-irrigation, so a lot of things have just been hung up, waiting for the irrigation to go in. Now that the irrigation's finally going in. Now that the irrigation's finally going in, we have, we have to look beyond that. What's the next steps? Well, we have a federally regulated pond lining and expansion that needs to be done. Expansion isn't regulated, but the lining is regulated. That's part of our National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permits. We don't have a choice, we're saying that, and that's going to tear up the back nine because the front nine ponds are fine, but the back nine either need lined, some of them aren't lined at all, and some of them have to be relined because it's been a long time and some of them weren't properly lined apparently in the past. And of course, we have a greens conversion from Bentgrass to Bermuda, and that was approved by the commission in our master plan for Parks and Recreation in 2024 because golf courses under Parks and Recreation. We also would like to do beautification windbreak, beautification and windbreak projects with pollinator zones and pollinator-friendly planting, starting on the back nine. And part of that is to protect those greens on the back nine from desiccation and will help bring some color to that site as well. And of course, cart path repairs. We've got some very uneven portions of the cart path and then we'd like to widen those cart paths where we can, where we can. We also like to do the driving range improvements with the newer, bigger, longer, taller nets. That needs to be done regardless because we need to be able to protect our passersby and our golfers on the golf course. And we'd also like to introduce the new, new game that's more accessible for those who aren't really golfer golfers, but they like to maybe hit balls around. So it's got trackable stacks, stats. It's like a Topgolf-type system. And then it includes teaching tools for new and experienced golfers, and we'd like to make that free to our high school team also, or actually all of our youth teams. More programs and events to appeal to the entire community, introductory games and events, non-golf events, these are one-off, and these are just suggestions, these are things that's come up in our, you know, talking to the public. So, you know, things like Easter egg hunts, picnics, music events, weddings, et cetera. So how do we get there? Obviously, it's going to take some reimagining, new marketing strategy to encourage new players, encourage golf-adjacent activities, like the driving range activities and events for the whole community, carefully scheduled and curated to maximize fun and minimize impact on the golf course. Obviously, we don't want people running all over the greens, tearing up the greens, things like that. So those are obviously things that have to be taken into consideration. We'd also like to see extended hours at the restaurant and at the driving range when it has gotten its improvements. We want to keep the fees reasonable to reflect that this is a municipal golf cart, or course. We know that we will need a new golf cart fleet and, again, with the driving range features. And then this is just an example of what that driving range feature might look like. So what staffing would look like, obviously, the restaurant would be leased to a contractor with revenue sharing. We propose to go to the 90-10 with the first year remaining at 95-5, just to incentivize that person or that restaurateur to do more and give them time to kind of figure out what needs to be done as far as menu and things like that. And then city staff, we'd like to manage and operate the pro shop. Obviously, we want, we'd love to have the current staff that's there to come into our fold. We want four, four full-time pro shop would be cross-trained to assist with golf course maintenance. One of those would be an admin assistant that would be cross-trained to do, to be a cashier. And then we'd have five part-time pro shop, cross-trained to also assist with golf course maintenance, one full-time PGA golf pro to provide lessons and retain a percentage of their fees, and one full-time general manager of golf and then continue to manage and operate the maintenance. So, this is the future model with the pro shop in-house and the restaurant at 90-10. The first year shows the restaurant at 95-5. We have a lot of unknown costs that year because we have to buy all of the revenue out of the pro shop as per the contract. And of course, there's fixtures, things like that. We'd also have to buy our golf carts, things like that. So our, we're a little bit kind of upside-down looking in the first year. And then our second year, that's when the restaurant goes to 90-10. And that's also when hopefully things will be kicking off and we'll be getting a lot more traffic to the, to the golf course through programming and events and things like that. Our third and fourth year is where we're hoping that we will have our new driving range features in. And we know through lots of stats and things that those drive a lot of people both to food and beverage, and they're never not busy unless the weather is just so inclement that it's not possible. And we included the sixth year in this. Normally, we wouldn't forecast out that far, and that's just to show where that's when the golf cart fleet would be paid for. So this is what the pro shop in-house and restaurant revenue at 90-10 would look like through those, those six years. So how do we make this reimagining work? All of these plans only work if we invest in the course, and this regardless of the model. But we have to invest in the course and that will take time and money. And we can invest in the course by improving our ponds, repairing our cart paths, doing the greens conversion. And these will only work if we also invest in our community. And this will also take time and money. And we can invest in our community by adding the Z-Trans, offering lessons at low free cost, which we know also happens now. But we'd like to expand on that. Also have family-friendly events, charity and fundraising tournaments, and free golf range, golf or driving range days and more. So how do we find the funding? Funding? Well, with the ability to manage the course coming in-house, we're eligible for more grant opportunities through our recreation and other government grants. And by developing more inclusive programming for youth, women, and minorities, we also gain more state and federal recreational opportunities. This isn't saying that they aren't appealing to that, those demographics now. They do. There's lots of women, youth, and minorities out there currently. What we're saying is, is we can do more program-specific, more programming specifically for certain folks, which makes us more eligible for certain grants. And so if we can get more women or more youth, those, there's actually grants specifically for that through, through different government organizations. So, and then the current subsidized amount could be put towards the course rather than paying a contractor. So that's essentially what we're trying to do. We're trying to put that money that we're currently subsidizing into the course rather than to going to pay a contractor. Work on the course can proceed much more quickly without interfering with a contractor's ability to generate revenue because we, as, the way it is set up with the current model, it's, we've got to like, hey, can we do this? Can we not? How do we do that? And then we have to kind of work to try to make it, make it work. And with us taking it in-house, we can just get the work done. So, addressing some concerns, private carts, we propose to grandfather private carts, maybe no new private carts, or maintain the current number of private carts, and then potentially having private, existing private carts install GPS. This is basically to make sure people are following cart path rules. Annual passes, cost in general, passes and fees would remain static for the first year. That allows us to collect data to show us where we have gaps in our service and where improvements need to be made. And there's concerns that will raise costs, but we want to make sure that they stay low because this is a municipal golf course and we want to make sure golfers continue to get a good bargain. That's why a lot of people golf here at our golf course, because they get a heck of a good bargain. So, option number two is the management proposal. So, management proposal submitted by G and L Golf. The management consists of the city purchasing all the inventory and paying all the costs associated with stocking and operating the restaurant and the pro shop. The city would lease all contractor-owned furnishing and equipment from G and L Golf. Even if this isn't G and L Golf, it, I use their example that they sent to us because it's basically, it's roughly kind of the same premise. And the city would receive all the revenue generated by the restaurant and the pro shop. So the following slide shows what that would look like. So in the management proposal that he submitted, the shared five-year revenue as reported to the city does not include the restaurant with $640,000 a year. The restaurant revenue as proposed was roughly 985. All other income as proposed was 195 with a total income of 1.8 million. So, the equipment rental cost management model, using all equipment, all current equipment, was 3,000 a month. Carts, range beverage service, gas, marshal carts, all arrage equipment, range balls, all IT equipment, all club repair, golf shop displays, rental clubs was included in that. So, the cost of the management plan would be 1.621. That includes the $80,000 as their flat fee. That's their management fee on top of all of those costs. So that includes, you know, cost of goods, cost of other expenses, cost of the management fee, cost of equipment rental. And then you add in the cost of the maintenance, our five-year, that's our cost to pay our staff and buy seed and fertilizer. That's over six, that's 663 is our five-year average, bringing our total yearly cost to operate to 2.2 million per year. So, if you take our expected revenue at 1.8, expected cost of maintenance at 663, and you pay that, our remaining balance is 1.1 and some change. And then the cost of the management plan would be 1.6. And that leaves us with a, an arrears of over $400,000, almost $500,000. So if you do the current five-year average, which is, if this is our visual that we like to do, our current five-year average is the first one. Our in-house model is the second one, starting with the second year. And then the management model as proposed is the third visual. So, the forecast of, in the management model assumes operations stay fairly static for the duration of the contract. There's no indication of a plan to appeal. Now, that was basing it on Grant's proposal, I will admit that, because there was nothing mentioned in his, his letter that he sent to us or in his spreadsheet that he provided to us. We do an in-house, if we do the, if we send this out to a management plan, obviously, we're going to write a whole different kind of contract. The yearly arrears amount would be double the current average and the course would continue to suffer as the subsidy would go to pay the management company. Option three, sale or reversion of the golf course. Verify the deed restrictions, possibly revert to the Alamogordo Country Club. Some legal and real estate questions are tied to the back nine and BLM required it to be used for recreation for perpetuity. So that's always an option as well. This is Michael Bradley's personnel biography. If anybody wanted to know how many years of experience, where he's been, what he's done. So he has a bachelor's degree in agriculture and agronomy from Murray State University. He's been a member of the Golf Course Superintendents Association of America since 1997. He's been a general manager for four years at South Highland Country Club. He's been a consultant to five courses and facilities for seven to 10 years. He's assisted with the preparation and running of women's state amateur tournaments at the Miller Memorial Golf Course. He's experienced in the art of equipment and cart purchasing. He's rainbird-trained and certified. He's John Deere factory-trained technician also. He's very well-rounded. He has ran golf courses from the top to the bottom. I don't have, you won't see any golf course stuff on there. Basically, I'm a, I have some degrees. I've chased a lot of elk and bison. I wrestled a lot of things. And that is our presentation. Anybody have any questions?
I've got a couple of questions. And your numbers in there for, for the deal, like all the pond relinings and all of that stuff, shouldn't that be paid from, from 81 because that's for irrigation, water, water storage instead of coming out of the actual golf course budget?
So, yes, and maybe we can get some other funding for those type of things. So, the relining needs to happen on the back nine. So, we need to look at, at that. Yeah, I know what you're saying.
You know what I mean? It kind of makes the numbers look a little skewed. If we could take the funding out of 81 because that is water, wastewater type stuff, you know, those numbers might not look as bad.
So, so our numbers don't show like that because it's, we kind of made some estimates, but those aren't, those are in, like the workshops we've done with you to show what some of our future costing would be, but it's not figured into these costs. Because those, those are things that we know that's going to have to come. There's, it's going, it's a big project and it's, there's going to be grant and other kinds of funding that have to come for those. And we can't, can't grant, you can't count grant funding in your budget until you have it in your hand, right?
And then another question I had out there, and it's been brought up numerous times from different people, but the water quality that we're getting from the wastewater plant and that's going into the ponds might be part of the reason that the greens and the fairways are dying. I've heard that we have wells out there that we kind of blend the water with fresh water. Do we know exactly how much we blend and when and times and?
So we have a well.
A well?
We have a, there's two wells on the golf course. One of them is drinking water. We don't, we can't touch that.
Okay.
And one of them is another water, a well. And we can use a certain amount of it, but we are, you know, capped on how much. So the little pond, what's that?
Nine.
Okay, yeah. There's a little pond, and that's where it goes. And then it basically goes all to the back nine and it dilutes those ponds. So some of the things we're doing to try to improve water quality, so, because it's not drinking water, it's drank water, right? So what we have to do, what we know, because we've done lots of water testing, is our water is salty. There's thousands of people in town, everybody's got a water softener, all that salt. We don't, our wastewater plant's not a de-sal plant, it's a wastewater plant. A certain amount of it gets removed with sludge, but there's a lot of salt that stays in suspension and ends up in the ponds. So, we have a lot of pretreatment we're trying to do in the ponds, which will be a lot more effective once they're lined. But we're going to try to do a whole bunch. We have some diatoms we'll be adding to the ponds that'll help digest a whole bunch of that out to help improve the smell and just clear up that water and make it a lot better. We have some things that we're applying to the course to help flush out the salt from the roots and kind of bind with that and get it out of there. So there's a lot of things that's have to happen because our, not only because the water is so salty, we've had to, and it's been being applied to the course for forever, we've got to get that salt out of the soil too. We've got to bind that salt. So those are all things that, that's kind of the behind-the-scenes stuff that people don't know is happening, but we've been doing a lot of soil sampling, a lot of water sampling, trying to figure out what we need to do. And those things are all starting to happen. And with the new irrigation system, it's not leaking all of our product out. We actually have injection pumps that will be putting a lot of this stuff into the, into the system, so.
Just, it just seems, you know, I'm not a golfer. I don't go out there very often. Go to breakfast out there every now and then, but it seems like a lot of these problems have started in the last three to five years. And we've used affluent water out there for a long, long time. That's why my question is on the quality that we're getting of the water out of the wastewater plant.
Well, I can't speak to what's happening at the wastewater plant. Obviously, that's not my purview. I know how a wastewater plant operates, but, because in my bio, you'll see, I used to be a wastewater plant operator actually, but we don't have anything to do with that. We're kind of stuck with the product that we have. But over time, that stuff accumulates and, you know, we just have to, we kind of have to deal with that. But that's why we have to do regular soil and water samples so that we can kind of see where we're at and what we need to adjust to, to make that water better.
Honestly, I do feel we have control over the quality of the water coming out of our plant.
Well, no. We don't.
You guys don't, but we as a city.
That's, that's another department. I can't.
Okay.
Do we know how many parts per million for the contaminants that are in there currently?
You mean like salt? That's my question.
Give me just a moment, I'll get you.
2440. 2440. 2470.
That's why I said to you.
And that's salt? It's pretty high. It's like seawater.
And what are we supposed to be at?
A lot less than that.
So I have another question. There's a $600,000 increase in the subsidies this coming year. What, what are they for?
That, that's the irrigation. That's our, that's our part that we had to put in for the irrigation. in for the irrigation, on top of the grants. We had, the city had to pay a, a portion.
A portion of it.
Yeah, that's our matching funds.
Six hundred thousand is the matching funds, or?
Roughly, yeah. Well, that and, and the extra, right.
I think there's a little bit of a misconception of why it's so much more this year than it was.
No, it's, it's our matching funds for the... Question? I know you have questions.
Yeah, Bendy, um, just a quick question. Grant's contract's up in October.
Correct.
No matter what. You're planning to buy golf carts? And like, I mean, whether the, a management company comes in, or, or the city takes it, either way, do you have, do you have to buy golf carts? I guess that's.
Well, I, I think, we're kind of planning on it, we're trying to, kind of steel ourselves for this, but it really depends, when the RFP goes out, how that comes, what, what the, who we choose, if they come with carts, or if we have to buy carts.
Okay, so.
But we're kind of, kind of planning towards that, but.
So whether you have a management company, or the city, you have to buy golf carts?
We, we, we likely have to buy golf carts.
Okay, and how many do you plan to buy?
Well, with feedback, we'll probably buy however many private carts we have, the, the building only holds so, well, only holds, housed so many carts, correct? So we'll probably buy roughly the same amount of carts that's in there now.
How many, how many is that?
I think that's thirty-five or forty? Oh, is it forty-five, forty-five or fifty, yeah?
Okay. So in, in the, in the income that you have, is it, it's based off of how many, I mean, just, just, is it based off forty golf cart rentals? I mean, in your?
The, the income was based off, the income and expenses in the original model is actually based on us purchasing sixty carts. And it's, the income is also based on, for the cart rental portion was based on rounds of play of the five-year average.
I think it would have been better to, to kind of go off forty instead of sixty, but that's.
Well, and, but I think if you will remember, in our original plan, we had talked about doing away with golf carts, but since then, we've, like I said, we've received copious amounts of feedback on that, and that, that would probably be something we would, we would definitely have to change.
Perfect. Another question. There were four ponds that were re, re, they re-lined them, I don't know, five or six years ago?
That's the front nine.
Yeah, on the front nine? In two thousand eighteen. Do you know how many, um, because I, if I'm, I'm, I think I played then, I'm pretty sure I did, I don't know that they, that those, when they lined them, that it affected rounds at all. I think they played, everybody played around, all that.
When you, think about how that side of the course is set up versus the back nine. So the back nine, we're going to be, those little ponds, we've got a, what we want to do is enlarge those, so there's going to be a lot of dirt moving. Not, we may not have to close the entire course, obviously, we're going to do one pond at a time, we just may have to close portions of the course at a time. We wouldn't close, obviously, we wouldn't close the whole back nine just to be re-lining ponds, we would have to close portions, just because, you know, those guys don't want to be targets, or accidental targets, or anything like that.
And do we, do we have a timeline as far as re-lining the ponds on the back?
We don't. I mean, our goal is, I mean, we're constantly looking at grants and trying to find sources for all of this stuff, so, um, but the sooner the better. I mean, that, that is actually one of our higher priorities, as far as like, big stuff. We don't want to be, I, I don't want to get the golf course into pristine shape, and then we're just going to go out there and drive a bulldozer through it, kind of thing. I want to get the course in good shape, but we know we have these big things coming also, so.
And how much larger?
I want to get that done sooner than later.
How much larger are you trying to?
Not, not gigantic, we're just trying to build our holding capacity. So I don't know if you've seen any of those ponds on the back nine when we had them drained, one of them has about maybe sixteen inches of water, because it's full to the brim in sludge, in, in sediment. And so that's got to be dredged out. If we can dredge it out, eke out a little couple extra feet in width and depth, that gives us more holding capacity. And then we have the kind of the peanut-shaped ponds on eighteen, that they used to have in a little concrete spillway between them, that's long ago failed, I just want to make that one big pond. And so if we can get a little bit of width and a little bit of depth, that just adds to our holding capacity, both for our freshwater, since our freshwater comes in that way, too, so.
Didn't they re-line sixteen as well? I mean, I think they did.
Yeah, that, that lining has, is sixteen the one at the pump house, or the one by the wall? Okay, yeah, so that one is not as high a priority. The banks are, in my opinion, not golf course safe, but.
Keeps alligators away.
Well, if we have problems with alligators in Alamo Gordo, we've got, there's, there's a whole nother set of issues we got, but I got my catch pole in the truck, so if you see one, so. Anybody else?
I'm sorry, I had a question about the, all of the things that you're putting in to maintain the, the golf course. And I was talking to someone at the golf course, and they were talking about the amount of water that is needed per day during the summertime, seven hundred thousand gallons to a million. So with everything that is being done, would that satisfy what the course needs once you do all of the reseeding and all of the changes you do to the pond?
Yeah, so seven hundred thousand to a million gallons a day, and, and we can budge a little bit more than that, too. That's, that should be what that golf course takes in a day, and that's what we put out every single day, right now. Well, when, when the pumps are working and the irriga, when the lines are hooked up. Right now, not, not, not so much. Not, right now, we might be going a little skinny on water, but that's just because we, the irrigation system's going in, a lot of lines are cut right now, so.
And will that decrease the amount of people you'll need on the, like in maintenance, to maintain the?
Actually, it increases the amount of people, because we have a staff of six right now, mowing a hundred and twenty acres and trying to maintain all of that. So that's why, if you'll notice, within our proposal, that, that the pro-shop staff and the cart staff, our outside staff, we want them cross-trained, so if they're not doing something there, they're on a weed eater, they're helping edge bunkers, or what have you, so.
So how many people do you need to fully staff the maintenance? And we're at six right now?
Yes.
So Commissioner Burnett, I don't think you were here during COVID, that's when we laid off a lot of our seasonal and part-timers, so eventually, we'd like to get that number back up, so that, you know, we're putting all this money into the golf course, so that we can be able to maintain it at the level that it needs to be, but we laid a bunch of those off, and we're, we would like to get them back. Just, you know, for, for the record, which you all know, you know, the golf course falls under quality of life and not essential services, so there's a balancing act that we have to play every year, so.
Right, right.
So tell me about the master plan. Grant's contract's up in October?
Yes.
And we're going to have a master plan, hopefully, for the next ten years?
So typically, they do a long-term for ten, and then you have your really hardcore focused stuff on, for the first five to seven, but yes, that would be the plan, is to basically, and then, of course, master plans have, public feedback is involved, there's lots of polling, there's public meetings, things like that, to try to get as much input from the community as a whole, golfers and non-golfers alike.
I've been impressed with the town halls, especially from the golfers, because I'm not a golfer either. But they can be involved in this master plan?
Absolutely.
And, and when do we have to have this in alignment, so that golf course can keep moving? In October?
So, so.
So that's what, during our ICIP listing, each department has to determine what their priorities are, and so they'll have to ask for money for design, or for, not design, well, yeah, for design, too, but for money for master plans, and, and those type of expenses. So, um, right now, we're getting the irrigation, we'll look at what a master plan costs, something between fifty to a hundred and twenty thousand, and what we've been paying, depending on what, what area, so we kind of got to look at that as a, as, on the big picture.
So is there timeframe, we have to get this done?
Well, ideally, we would have it done within the first year, because operations would stay the same for the first year, because that's also our data collecting year, to find out where there's gaps in services, what people want to see, what people don't want, those sorts of things.
So this is an ongoing process?
It will be, it's a forever process, but, yeah.
That helps.
Do you have, anybody?
So, so in the RFP, if we decide to send a RFP, what are going to be, I guess we make that decision? What's going to be in the RFP, what's?
The criteria?
The criteria.
So.
Or at least, what is your guys' minimum criteria?
Well, I mean, that's, that's something we, we've got to sit down, we've got to flesh out, right? So, but obviously, we want to make sure that the, any sins of the past don't visit onto the future, so things that we see in the contract now, that's kicking our rears as far as being able to do things, those won't, wouldn't be in there. We want to make sure that we can do what we need to do on the course, and the contractor has to, you know, abide by, or just allow us to do that. They, they wouldn't be able to be like, you can't go out there and do that.
So sort of to answer a little bit, like, of course, like Belinda said, we're going to have to sit down, we're going to have to talk about it, but some of the things are, things that we just have been talking about, you know, having some, you know, maybe put in there that you have to have a, some type of event on there during the year to, you know, help garner some of that, um, regular citizenship that does involve to go out there, advertise, type of, those type of things. We also don't want to make it too stringent, kind of like what we do at the Fund Center. You know, there's, these are our basic minimums, but now, if we go out for RFP, that'll be another instance of where we bring it to the commission, they need to prove it to the commission, this is what they're doing. So we, we also have to set up the RFP to where we set them up for success, you know, not failure, while maintaining that it's a municipal golf course. But at this moment, because, you know, we're still waiting for commission's decision, we haven't really sat down and flushed all of that out.
Yeah, we did, we have ideas, and we, we know some of the things that we know that don't work, and we know some things that we think will work, so.
So with Grant's contract ending in October, for, but the timeline for us to get an RFP out, say it's sixty days?
So, um, let me, I was going to circle back to that when you guys were done. So, um, per state procurement, we can only do an eight-year contract. Because of COVID, during twenty twenty, the city manager, Caesar, extended all of the contracts because of the shutdown for three months, which was allowable. Beginning with the, um, state procurement, we can, they will allow us to extend it for one more year from the expiration of the, of the original expiration, only because of the condition of the golf course, um, all the projects that we have in line, so we can transition to whichever you decide tonight. So we will be allowed to extend it through June of twenty twenty-six, which I've already spoken to both Grant, Jason, and Lori, that we will be doing that, but I didn't put it in, we haven't done that amendment to the contract yet, because we, depending on which way you go, the language for transition is going to change.
Don't really understand the push either for opening it up. I mean, right now, anybody can use the golf course, correct? I mean, I've been out there for the builders' tournaments that I played, I haven't played in a long time, but, I mean, anybody can go out there at any time and, and play golf, correct?
Absolutely.
So what's the push to, to have like an event to open it up more to the public? I don't, I don't understand that.
To get more people involved in golfing, like, we want to get people out there typically, and I can't speak to all this, maybe Grant or Jason can, it's just to try to get more interest, to making it, I don't want to say accessible, but just so people, you know, there's no question that anybody can go to our parks. There's some question, can everybody go to the golf course? And I don't know where that perception came from or not, but it's just kind of one of those things, you, our golf course, you know, you, we need golfers. In order to grow and make it successful, we need to start growing more golfers as well. So I think it's just, it's not necessarily a push, as it is, maybe more advertisement, letting people know, growing the programming, you know, speaking with Jason and Grant, these programs already existed, it's one of those things that, because of certain things, they kind of drop off, and kind of getting back to that. That's just the whole part of growing it, making it part of the bigger plan of Alamo Gordo.
I just know from experience, when you have, you know, people like me, that go out there once a year, sometimes, I know the builders' tournament tears the golf course up tremendously, because sometimes there's a lot of alcohol involved, and, you know what I mean? And, and that's why I'm kind of concerned about that, it's like, you know, yeah, it's open to the public, but also, we don't want people out there that are going to be tearing up the course.
Yeah, and we would limit it to certain areas, and so we wouldn't be like, here's a free-for-all for all, do what you got to do, but it, it's just one of those, it's like, let's make, let's start growing the game more, let's start getting more golfers out there, you know, that type of thing.
So like, like I said earlier, we wouldn't be, any special events, it's not like we'd be turning people loose, it would be carefully curated and staged for a particular area, that we wouldn't just be letting people run on the greens, which is our, you know, that's the part that you really, really want to protect. But what we want to do is, there is a perception in town, I mean, I can't tell you how many calls I've gotten from the non-golfing community, that's, I don't feel welcome out there, I didn't know I could go out there, I thought it was a country club, you know, things like that, and so that's why we've been trying to make sure everybody knows, this is a municipal golf course, and they may not come and golf, but they have to know that they have the opportunity to come and golf. And so, and golf, the people who golf are very passionate about golf, but if we want to keep the golf course going and viable, we've got to also be building up more golfers to come out there and at least try it. And we do that through special events, where we, you know, maybe, maybe they just golf two or three holes, or something like that, just to try to, you know, see if they're interested in it, kind of thing, so.
I don't understand where that comes from, as far as people saying that they're not welcome. I, I'm, I've golfed out there, and I didn't really become serious until about five years ago, but I can tell you from all these people out here, not one time have I ever felt unwelcome, regardless, and I golf with many of them.
Well, and we're not saying that it's not welcome.
I'm not saying it's you guys, I'm just saying, this perception from these other people.
Right, and so that's.
This really doesn't make sense unless they're just not spending time out there.
Right, well, and like I said, that's a perception, and that's a perception that we're trying to work on, and, and it's, basically, it's a PR thing, right? So, um, those are things that we're, those are, those are the, some of the things that we, we want to address, and, and try to get, come, come to the golf course and check it out, and then they can't say that, you know, they don't have the opportunity, or, it's, it's not there, so.
Do you keep a log of the calls you get, or emails?
I don't keep a log, but the emails are just in the system, and most of the emails I've gotten recently are forwarded from commissioners who.
I'm just, the reason I'm asking is, I've been here a long time, and I have never received a phone call or an email about, hey, we're not welcome at the golf course. That's the reason I'm asking.
Right.
Generally, if you guys, phones ringing, ours is ringing as well, and I'm just curious, if, how many?
Well, I, I'll bet you that there's a couple of people watching right now, that if, if they had come, because they texted me, but that they would be probably saying that, but, you know, there's, there's just a perception that it's an old, rich, white people's sport, and that's, that's a perception that, you know, and we know that, we know that there's plenty of women, and youth, and minorities, and everybody else out there golfing. I'm not saying that, that's just, that's the perception, and that's, those are things that we've been told, and.
Thank you.
Good presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just so, before you vote, I can say just a, a couple of things. As city staff, just like the Fund Center, you know, when we, when I put the Fund Center in front of y'all, there are a lot of people saying, well, the city ma, the assistant city manager wants to sell the building. It's not that we want, these are the options, you know, we, we chose to take it to the public, so that the public can have a voice, that's where the workshops came in, Belinda wanted to do a second one, we did the second one. These are just options. Whatever the commission chooses to do, I can promise you that the vision doesn't change, and that we're going to do the best we can to elevate the golf course to where it once was. So, you know, I, I know there mentioned tension, and I see that as passion. People have been very passionate about this, and I honestly wish more people would be, come and show their passion for other areas of the city of Alamo Gordo. It saddens me that it's, it doesn't happen on every item that we have, so, you know, I appreciate the good and the bad, you know, we don't know what we don't know, so, you know, thank you to everybody who came out. And, you know, with, if, I know that at some point, it felt that we were kind of working against Grant and Jason, because there was a, or G and Al Golf and Jason, because there wasn't a lot of communication, but I just want to make it clear, like, we were, we have to be very careful not to get hit with the collusion, so we were trying to, in kind of, So, we were trying to in kind of separate Grant or GNL and Jason in case they put in for it because if we get too much input from them, we can get hit with collusion saying, you know, we're getting input, we're showing favoritism. So, in, we're, we're trying to shield them and the city. So, it felt that there was some lack of communication, which that was never the intent. And I, I think we worked through those issues. And so, I just wanted to thank everybody, thank Belinda and Mike for all their hard work and sometimes for taking it on the chin. And like I said, we'll, whatever you all decide, we'll do the best we can at it.
Are we ready for the vote?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion. I'd like to make a motion to extend GNL Golf, Inc., their contract until June of twenty twenty-six while we actively go out for RFP for management agreement.
And so, the contract's already going to be extended, so the commission doesn't have to make that motion.
Okay.
So, what are we voting on then?
We're voting to.
Option one, two, or three?
Okay, then. I, I motioned to go out for RFP for management agreement.
Second.
Okay, we have a, a motion from our Commissioner Guthrie and then we have a second from Commissioner Warren.
Can we clarify, this is to go out for RFP, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Mayor Proten McDonald?
I, I'm looking for it. It's not coming up.
She goes to the other.
Oh, she on the old?
Yeah, she goes to the other.
And the vote passes, six zero for the RFP.
Let's make a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Make a motion to adjourn.
And we are adjourned. We got to vote, okay.
I'm sorry, who, Commissioner Burnett, you made the motion to adjourn. Who seconded the motion?
Tapley.
Tapley.
Sorry, jet lag. And the vote passes, so we're adjourned.